At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for March 9th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone who's present. And we'll move on to the approval of minutes February 24th, 2020.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I got a question.
Councilmember Richards?
Okay, Clerk Lisa, okay. On page five, okay, on my comments at one paragraph, second one down, on the third line up from the bottom where it says, "He stated there is more coming up this year AND," it's supposed to be "THAN," not "AND." Okay, because that's what I said, "THAN he can handle." Okay? That's it.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll second the minute as amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Onto the approval of the bills.
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Oh, I have something.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I would like to see if council would entertain postponing item number four, which is a ward of bid to demolish the abandoned buildings in McCady Park, 461 South Washington. And I'm not concerned with the Slara building. But I would like to see us wait 30 to 40 days on this before we approve this. Hopefully, I got a grocery list of reasons, okay? I don't know if I should go into it right here, though.
Well...
If you want us to entertain it, you do.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right. First of all, the price is too high. Second of all, the contractor that's awarded this bid, he can, what he'll do is probably remove that building from the property intact. Also, the barn, which can be used, they can be shipped up north easily on a low buoy for a hunting lodge up there, where there's less restrictions in private properties. The garage can easily be a smokehouse, okay? And the little house is perfect for a hunting cabin, especially with a functional furnace in it and a very brand-new water heater. And it's fairly tight. And that could easily be halted. If he's going to do that, okay, rather than put it in a dumpster, crush it up and put it in a dumpster, which is more expensive to him, he certainly knows places he could do that. Why don't we do it? Offer it for $600 and see if we could sell it. If we don't get in response when the weather will be a little bit better, then go ahead and demolish. Okay? That's my thought on it, people. And plus, I'd like to save the trees, but so what? That's been done before, okay? Anyway, that's my reasons, counsel, and I, that's why I would like to postpone the bid of number four for a later date.
Councilmember Walton?
I just want to clarify that we are talking about the same property, the property at 461 Washington. Correct me if it's wrong, but it's the abandoned building that sits in the park currently on the property near the rental house.
That's correct.
So it's not the house at the other end with the garage and property like that.
Correct.
So are you understanding the...
Yes, we got three properties, the Lafayette House, this house, and the 501 house on McMunk.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same property.
Councilmember Kibble?
First off, the idea of us selling a house that doesn't have the asbestos abated already is just out of the question. We would end up absorbing all kinds of liability by doing that.
Right. The asbestos will be approved of number three, the asbestos will be gone, then we can sell it.
Well, we're not going to spend the money on doing that and then turn around. And first off, your calculus about the value of those buildings is really way over the top.
Maybe you're right.
They're not going to, it would cost way more to ship that anywhere, even if it was just to the DPW yard than it would to simply raise the building.
Okay. My thought on the matter, from my observations and experience, was that if we sell it, get a few bucks out of it, and let somebody else's insurance policy worry about the cost of getting it out of there. They've got to have insurance to do it, so let somebody else worry about it and save us a few bucks, okay?
Well, if you can get a second, we can vote on it.
Okay. Any seconds? Okay, motion dies. I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. Okay, we will close public comment. And we will do our first discussion of the downtown without Mr. Don here.
I just want to update council that we will be interviewing for the vacant position of Economic Development/DDA Director this week. And I'll advise council after that if we are going to potentially hire any of those individuals that we are in fact interviewing. Also, this Friday, the DDA meeting is going to be held. That meeting was changed due to the fact of a couple of members who are going to be attending a, DDA board members are attending a workshop in Lansing on Wednesday and Thursday. So that meeting will be on Friday. Other than that, I don't...
It's really hard to hear you.
Is it? Okay, I'm sorry. I just want, did you hear the first part regarding the interview we'll be doing this week for the DDA director? And also, our DDA meeting was moved into Friday because a couple of members of the DDA board are attending a workshop in Lansing. I'm sorry. And that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Kennedy?
What time is the meeting on Friday, Paul? Is it still 6:00? For the DDA...
DDA meeting's at 8:00 AM. DDA meeting's at 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, okay.
Anyone else have anything about the downtown for Paul? Okay, great. Public hearing for Commercial Rehabilitation District.
So tonight, Mr. Mayor, we will have to open and close the public hearing and take any comments that residents may have regarding the establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation District, designed for parcel number 802120360023, the former RCA Building. And after that, later on in the agenda, we will actually have discussion on the establishment of that particular district. But as part of the Public Act, 210 of 2005, we must hold a public hearing and take any public comments from business owners or residents regarding this district.
Lisa, so we just need to open up the floor for the public hearing?
Yeah, just like any public hearing.
Well, at this time, we will open up the floor for the public hearing on the Commercial Rehabilitation District.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you should make a motion.
Okay, well...
Somebody should make a motion.
Yes, I cannot do that. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we open our public meeting. The time is 7:40 to discuss the Commercial Rehabilitation District and to hear comment from the public.
I'll support.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Floor is open.
You can close it if there's no one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing that was heard at 7:40 to hear public comment on the establishing of a Commercial Rehabilitation District.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. And we're on to the fire chief report. Chief Vogel.
Since the last council meeting, it has been a very hectic, busy week, two weeks for us. About eight days ago, we had a serious car crash at Dixboro and Ten Mile, where we got to use the new Jaws of Life we purchased, and it was excellent. I am very, very happy with the purchase. Wednesday, last Wednesday, we had a fire at Wendy's. I want to give a shout out to the staff. That manager was excellent. She was able to get everybody out, including a pregnant employee, out and direct us to where the fire was, which was inside the building, in the walls. It was quickly extinguished, and we were working very hard to get them back open. And then finally, today, we had a fire at Country Acres. We assisted Green Oak. I was the first one there. Ended up being a fire in an air handling unit inside the front door. I don't know what the status of the building is. It was closed when I left. And today, with also an excitement, HVA crashed one of the overhead doors. So we're working hard to get that paid for by them and fixed as quickly as we had to put their ambulance in my park and put one of my vehicles outside because theirs has to be plugged in. So hopefully, I'll have that done tomorrow. Coronavirus has ruined my life for the last 30 days. I get 13 emails a day, changing policies, suggestions, and protocols. Luckily, I just give it all to Cindy. I say, siphon this and then get it back to me, and then I give it to Paul.
Delegate.
We finally got some hand sanitizer for the City Hall that I'll be installing tomorrow. I made a recommendation, or she did, to Chief Sovik that we get some hand sanitizer in patrol cars. We get some in the water department vehicles when they have to do shut offs or meter reads. I'm constantly having to change policy within my department, which gets dictated by the Oakland County Medical Control Board. The challenge we have, and it's not just me, it's Police Department and City Hall, has been getting product and necessary stuff to carry on the vehicles in the City Hall and the station, but we're getting through it. Cost-wise, I think we've been pretty good at keeping the costs down. I don't feel that we'll notice yet. Tomorrow with the elections, I'm not sure how that's going to go. I will be getting in really early tomorrow to help Lisa get the voter registration or the volunteers in the station because they work in Sovik's building. And then finally, pretty exciting, I don't, I've asked a lot of people, it's ever happened before, the mayor will be marrying one of my firemen tomorrow in the station.
Oh.
Oh. Wonderful. Oh, how nice.
He's trying to not make a big deal about it, my firefighter, but I made a big deal about it. So I'm pretty excited.
That's cool.
Any questions? I know there's a lot.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
First off, I was wondering, the idea of the accident, do you... For heaven's sakes, it just slipped my mind. The virus thing is kind of where I'm mostly focused is, are we going to be putting out signs and things in all the election areas for where the restrooms are with soap and water for people to take advantage of?
That would be, the building that, in my opinion, that we use is a challenging building over it, Sovik's administration building. It's an unusual building for a pole station, so that would be something for Lisa or maybe Chief Sovik. Today, I made sure I went over there with my crews to kind of get things broken down. Part of the problem we have is Wednesday after elections, it's hard for us to clean up. So I tried to get ahead of it this year and try to change it a little bit. I don't know if they offer public bathrooms. I know that the pole workers all get a break area and a restroom, but as for everything else, that would be for Lisa, is our clerk.
We actually have models of hand sanitizer. We're going to have it out of pole stations.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
I just know that they keep saying on the news how people keep looking for sanitizers and things, but it's just as effective if you properly wash your hands with soap. So I think we should try to be pushing as much of that as we possibly can.
So to cover the crash you saw, what the difference would have been, old tools, new tools, is new tools instantly go to work. I don't know if you saw that, but it was literally, the truck pulled up, tools off the truck, door was open. It was literally seven minutes, I think, to get the door open, even though the time shows nine. I think it was more like seven because I took a couple of minutes to report it. And we had access to the patient. I was pretty really impressed with Sovik's new employee. Mark is just an excellent, excellent officer, I noticed.
That's great news.
Because of a lot of experience, so he was very, very helpful.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you've referenced on Facebook that you've had several accidents with the doors at the fire station. Is it the trucks being too big? Is it mirrors?
Today wasn't my fault.
What is going on?
Today wasn't one of us, it was ambulance. And since I got here, they have a timer on their door. From day one, I started complaining, please take that timer off your door. Two things, one, it stays open too long. So January, when it's minus 30, we feel it instantly.
Right.
It was a five-minute timer. Well, finally, they agreed, and a supervisor cut the timer, and they're going to force them to use the overhead door. I've been doing this for 33 years, and I can tell you that fire trucks like to hit overhead doors. It is nature of the business. I've tried, we back up people, you know, it's in our policy, you will not back up unless somebody's behind you, and it still happens. So sometimes, it's pulling out, not just backing in. You know, today wasn't us, I was, we heard it. I mean, it shook the building like it always does, and...
I'm just wondering if it's mirrors, can we get some extra mirrors up there?
No, it's just literally...
Curved mirrors, things like that.
You, a lot of times when it happens is you hear a child's hurt or there's a fire, and adrenaline gets high, and we just drive through them.
Trying to get there.
It's, I used to joke that instead of overhead doors, we ought to have like those little pieces of plastic you see at like a freezer at restaurants that we can just drive through and back through. We work hard to try to prevent it. The one that happened to us last year was truly human error, or I think both human error and accidental. But I did make sure that last time they were out, that all the sensors are working. I want to make sure that if somebody breaks the plane or the truck breaks the plane, the door goes back up. So they have been checked.
Aye.
Anyone else have anything for Chief? Thank you, Chief, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the police chief report with Chief Sovik.
We don't have those garage door issues at the Police Department, just so you know. Just kidding. The Easter egg hunt this year for the kiddies at Volunteer Park will be on April 11th this year. You'll have the packet and the near future coming out. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that April 11th. At the last meeting, in your council packets, there was a Slara 5K run walk. And in my, I noticed that I put Saturday, September 7th, when it's actually Monday, September 7th. So it will be on Labor Day, September 7th, the Slara 5K run walk. Sergeant Fought met with Paige George. She is the representative of the Coalition Against Vaping in our area. Last week, I had some brief introductions and talked about what their plan is going forward. She's actually going to have an office in one of the schools. At this time, it's so early, they don't know where she's going to be, but it's going to be in the, in one of the schools at this point. So we're excited about getting that going. The Longevity Lung Cancer 5K Fund Run and Walk will take place May 16th this year. Once again, you'll be seeing the packet in the very near future to discuss that. And lastly, I wanted to thank the nice lady in front of me at Taco Bell this afternoon who paid it forward and paid for my lunch. I just wanted to say thank you. Appreciate it.
That's nice. Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul's probably going to roll his eyes when I start talking about this, but I'm still really concerned about that crosswalk in front of the hotel. Yesterday, or Thursday, I went to Trivia, I parked at Tenpenny, started to cross the street with my friends. A car was a decent distance. As we were coming, we assumed they'd see us. They came within inches of us. And when we stopped them and I said, that's a crosswalk, the woman rolled down her window and said, I had no idea it was a crosswalk, I did not see you guys, there was a car there. The two cars that are parked, there's always two cars parked there. When you step out, you can't be seen. And that sign, I assume, has been moved because of plows, so there's not even a sign there. So we have to do something. I think that that crosswalk gives people a false sense of security, and somebody's going to get hit. And we already had a person come in here in tears about, someone who drives our seniors saying that. And I know that we can't afford a big thing like Brighton does. I've done some research on some other things that we can do that maybe I'll bring up during budgeting. But we need to do something that has flashing lights or something that makes that more visible to the cars, and so that if people are, either it's a crosswalk or it's not, and we have to make it more visible. So that's my, I guess I'm just asking, is there something we can do? Can we get rid of those two parking spots? Can we get some flashers? Can we do something?
Yes, Chief and I have already discussed that. That last spot, as you go northbound, is going to be eliminated. There's actually one spot that's eliminated, but the second one will be eliminated. So there will be no parking from the Tenpenny Furniture Store all the way to that crosswalk at that location. So there's probably 100 feet now. The problem was is that there was a big truck that usually parks there every day. We've had discussion with staff. And then the improved striping that'll take place, that the DPW didn't get a chance to finish yet last year, unfortunately, because we had early snow in early November, that will be the high-visibility crosswalk that everybody will be able to see. So we believe those two items, we've had conversations with the Traffic Improvement Association about that, and we plan on making those as soon as we can within the improved weather.
We can always put the sign back out there now if the weather's kind of improving.
That, that also...
We were concerned with the weather, it was just going to get plowed over.
I assume.
But we can put that sign back out there and at least, you know, help with that situation.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to also advise that we check the lighting to make sure the lights are all in working condition, maybe get some brighter bulbs in there. But if we're going to get more signs, I would also like to see signs down near Witch's Hat Brewery. I know that they hire in officers at their cost for many of their events, but we have people coming in to our city to frequent that establishment, and we tell them to use the overflow parking on Dorothy. And so we're telling, we're literally encouraging them to cross the street there and play Frogger. them to cross the street there and play Frogger. So I'd like to see something down there, too.
And we'll comment that, I guess, maybe when we go through budget process, but we don't necessarily tell people to cross that location, that location. We have two lights that I think are 800 feet distance in either direction. And right now, there is no crosswalks at that location. There's no improvements there. There's ditching that's there. There's nothing there. But we can talk about that. I expect to talk about that during the budget, budget meeting.
Then you can also put one down at the crosswalk that has a light and a crosswalk down near Ronald Suite that runs right into the ditch that I complained about a few weeks back. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
Just one more, a little tune-up. There's gotta be like a photovoltaic light that could end up being solar light that could be mounted on the top of those, the actual crosswalk signs, because they're pretty dull. They don't stand out. And especially when it's dingy out, if there were a wash of light coming down on it, it'd obviously make it more apparent for people that are driving by, so.
Councilmember Kennedy?
And, and actually, to Mr. Councilmember Kibble's point, I actually was at Reagan Airport this morning. They have that photovoltaic crosswalk sign there. And it has a photo cell at the top.
Right.
The perimeter is highlighted with lights, and it just flashes all the time. So yeah, it does exist, and they do have them installed in places.
Anyone else have anything for Chief Sovick tonight? Thanks, Chief. On to new business this evening. Number one, purchase of a new raw sewage pump as quoted by Kerr Pump and Supply.
Alrighty, how's it going, everybody? Waste water treatment plant currently right now needs a, to replace the raw sewage pump. This is a scheduled purchase for this year's budget. It's part of a preventative maintenance to update the pump. Over the next few years, we're gonna probably do all of them, obviously. We're starting with the oldest. This expenditure can be purchased out of the capital improvements account, 592-557-970. And the most recent quote is attached for you guys' review. You can see the quote in the paperwork, obviously.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
I'd like to move to approve the purchase of a new raw sewage pump for the wastewater treatment plant for $24,308.00, under line item 592.557-970.
I'll support.
Question?
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you. Does this particular purchase, do we need a waiver? You only have one bid.
We could get a waiver if you wanted, but basically the reason for one bid is that we're not replacing them. There's a, on all these pumps, there's a component where you could replace the motor and the pump. We're replacing just the pump. They're mated together. So they're basically, the pump is to match the motor. We don't need a new motor. We need a new pump. And so that's why I'm not gonna, it'd be a lot more expensive if we were doing a motor and a pump. We're just doing the pump. And this is specifically designed for that electric motor, so that's why there's just the one bid for Aurora. They make this pump that matches that motor, and that's why we're going forward with this.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
Just for belt and suspenders, are they the only providers of that particular unit?
Yes.
That's the reason, so.
So we could, we could replace the whole works, the pump and the motor, if we wanted, and that would be obviously a whole different follow-up, so to speak. We're trying to keep it simple, so. That's why there's just the one bid, so.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the purchase of a new raw sewage pump for the wastewater treatment plant for $24,308, under line item 592.557-970. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Doug.
No problem.
New business number two tonight, the first reading of ordinance to amend the South Line Code of Ordinances to update the charges of malicious destruction of property and retail fraud to make them consistent with state law. Lisa?
Happy to, unless Chief Sovick wants to take this.
Basically, we're just, we're just, we're just adopting the ordinance to comply with state law. We're just basically changing the minimum thresholds from $100 to $200, basically, just so we're in compliance with state law as well. It's gonna make things easier for us, that's all. Very simple.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending section 58-221 to make it consistent with state law.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
I'd like to ask a question.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Are we, are we trying to get compliance so we can prosecute ourselves rather than the state?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dill, to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending section 55-221 to make it consistent with state law. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. New business number three this evening, award of bid to remove asbestos in the abandoned building located in McCady Park at 461 South Washington and the old Slara Building located at 318 West Lake Street.
Mr. Mayor, as part of our efforts to make further improvements in McCady Park, we have solicited bids to remove asbestos and demolish the building, the abandoned house in the park. Additionally, as part of our efforts to redevelop the property formerly occupied by Slara, we have solicited bids to remove the asbestos and demolish this building as well. I've attached materials for you, which is a letter from HRC outlining the recommendations for award of the bids for removal of asbestos at both locations. Possible course of action, approve or not approve the award of the bid to remove the asbestos at 461 Washington and 318 West Lake Street to BDS Environmental of Warren at an amount not to exceed $16,901 from budget account number 101-690-801.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the award of the, to remove the asbestos at 461 Washington and 318 West Lake to BDS Environmental of Warren at an amount not to exceed $16,901 against account number 101-690-801.
I'll support.
Any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Kibble?
There had only been the one bidder on this. I was just kinda curious. That seemed extraordinary.
Yes, we solicited bids and had contractors come, and this was the only one that decided to bid on it.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the, to approve the award of the bid to remove asbestos at 461 Washington and 318 West Lake Street to BDS Environmental of Warren at an amount not to exceed $16,901 to account number 101-690-801. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. New business number four this evening, award of bid to demolish the abandoned building located in McCady Park at 461 South Washington and the old Slara Building located at 318 West Lake Street.
Mr. Mayor, as I just mentioned regarding removing asbestos at the location at McCady Park, as well as demolishing the building, this is the second part of that particular project. The possible course of action tonight is approve or not approve the award of the bid to demolish a building at 461 Washington and 318 West Lake Street to intercity contracting Detroit at an amount not to exceed $26,120 from budget account number 101-690-801. And to approve the budget amendment to that same account number 101-690-801 to cover the complete cost of demolishing, demolishing both buildings, which is an increase of $18,201 to $43,201 for that individual line item in that account. What I did was I combined both demolition and asbestos removal to the, to one account. It was originally placed within the Parks and Rec, which comes out of the general fund. This, out of their best, this addendum or making the budget amendment is not necessarily taking any money out of Parks and Rec. It's just taking more money out of the general fund to help pay for that. But it would be much smoother to have it come out of one account instead of two separate accounts. We did not originally have this in our budget to remove and demolish the building, the old Slara Building at the beginning of the year. We discussed that after our budget was already approved, and that's why it's being added together, to get economies of scale to demolish and redo asbestos for both buildings.
Thank you for the clarification, Paul. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the award of the bid to demolish the buildings at 461 Washington and 318 West Lake Street to intercity contracting of Detroit, Michigan, at an amount not to exceed $26,120 from budget account number 101-690-801. And to approve a budget amendment to account number 101-690-801 to cover the complete cost of demolition of both buildings. An increase of, an increase of $18,201 to $43,201.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Councilmember Dill. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. New business number five this evening, establish the commercial rehabilitation district.
City council recently adopted a tax abatement policy for the community. This policy outlines the requirements for establishing a commercial rehabilitation district and for approving a proposed property tax abatement as outlined in Public Act 210 of 2005. At our city council meeting on February 24th, we set a date and time for a public hearing for the request by the owner of the property, a parcel 80-2120-360-023, former RCA building, to establish a commercial rehabilitation district. Tonight, we held a public hearing at the beginning of the meeting in order for all residents and taxpayers to be afforded the opportunity to be heard on the subject. In order to establish a district, the city council must determine whether they feel the district meets the requirements of the act. A copy of the sample resolution is attached, which covers the establishment of the rehabilitation district in parcel in question. We've also placed the filled-out resolution on your desk if you care to, to adopt it with all the pertinent data for the resolution on your, in front of you this evening. If city council votes in favor of establishing the district, the county may still accept or reject the establishment of the district. Once the district is established, the property owner may file an application with the clerk for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate. The clerk shall provide written notification to all taxing jurisdictions that levy ed floor and property taxes of an additional application public hearing. The city will have 60 days after receipt of the application to either approve or disapprove the application. This will then be sent to the state tax commission, which will either certify or deny the application within additional 60 days. The materials attached this evening are written requests to establish the district, the map identifying the boundaries of the district, and the resolution establishing the commercial rehabilitation district for parcel 80-2120-360-023. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you regarding this.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to establish the commercial rehabilitation district for parcel 80-21-20-360-023 pursuant to resolution number 01-20, titled Resolution Establishing Commercial Rehabilitation District for 1855 Holdings LLC.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead. We did have a second there by Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's ever a property in this town that deserves consideration for rehabilitation, it's this property. This property has been, as has been argued, I saw it for many years, okay? And the intended goal of the new owners is very ambitious. Whether he'll be able to achieve it or not, I would hope so. But one word of caution I'd like to add to it, I believe he intends to be a restaurant, okay, which is wonderful. But if you ever go for a liquor license, I'm sure the Presbyterian Church across the street would block it very vigorously, okay? So I'm just letting you know, okay? I'm very much in favor of this proposal, but there's a cloud in the sky. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Walton, to establish, to establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district for parcel 80-21-20-360-023. All of those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Before you move on from new business, I do have to ask you to make a correction. It was all happening so fast that I wasn't following what was happening. Item number two under new business, which is the first reading of the ordinance, the motion that was made was consistent with the agenda note that I prepared. However, that was in error.
Okay.
The suggested motion should have read, approve the first reading of the ordinance amending sections 58-117, 58-118, and 58-123, I'm sorry, 123, when in fact it read 58-221. So I'd ask that the council, somebody make a motion to reconsider that item. If in fact that motion passes, then you reconsider the item and correct that, just for belts and suspenders, as Councilmember Kibble stated earlier.
Absolutely. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to rescind the motion associated with the second item of new business on our tonight's agenda.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Yes, I would like to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending section 58-221. What was the additional material?
58, the, the new numbers?
Amending section 58-221.
The correct ones are 58-117.
Okay, so I, okay, I haven't-
58-118 and 58-123.
Okay, I withdraw my motion. Mr. Mayor, may-
Yes, Councilmember Kurtswell.
I would like to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending section 58-117 of chapter 58, section 58-118 of chapter 58, and section 58-123 of chapter 58 to make it consistent with state law.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Thank you, Lisa.
Sorry, it was my typo.
That's, I'm glad you caught it.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna make this very quick. Myself and Councilwoman Walton were at a weekend seminar regarding budgeting, so I have, I am renewing some of my requests that I've made before, and just thought I would bring some things up. First of all, I'd like to go back to the appreciation night that we held in, at the hotel in December. In the past, whenever that event has taken place, we've always received checks from vendors that were paying part of the cost. Did that occur this year? Did we receive checks from the various vendors, like HRC and places like that?
You go.
Did we get checks?
Yes, we did.
I thought that those checks then came to council, and we approved them as a donation.
I don't recall that, that had transpired within the past, but if we do, do, need to do that, and that was council policy, then we can do that.
I believe that it was. I believe that those checks always came, if they're not made out to the hotel, and if they're made out to the city, then they were construed as donations to the city, in which the city would use to cover the cost of the event. The checks would then come before council. Council would then acknowledge those individuals that made the contributions, thank them, et cetera, et cetera. I think if you go back through some of the meetings in December, you'll, you'll see in January where those checks were adopted. And the reason I'm asking about this is because at the budget meeting that they had, they did spend time on what is considered a legitimate or authorized expense of public tax dollars. And a retirement party is not a legitimate expense of tax dollars. This party would not have been a legitimate expense of tax dollars. So that's why it needs, I guess the best way to do it is in order for council to make sure that we are the good stewards of the taxpayers' money, I think that's why those checks came before council as a donation, so that the public could understand that tax dollars were not used to cover that function. So what it does is-
And I will find out if they were written to the hotel, or if they were written to the city. I will check with our finance administrator.
Okay, that would be great. I passed along some information to you regarding, and this is directed to the city manager, regarding a fund balance policy. I was just wondering if you've had time to look at the materials, what your thoughts were on that, or if you're inclined to develop one, or?
Yes, I do think it's a good idea to have one. I'm not sure if this is the right time to do that. I think we have to review what our expenditures are going to be within the future, so we can make sure, ensure that we do in fact have those right limits, as you and I discussed.
Yeah, I think that that was one of the things that came out in the budget session, that this is really a good practice, a best practice. Next, I wanted to ask you, do you have a rough draft of the budget? Is it possible to get a copy of that before you leave on vacation? I don't even need the tabs, just, just a draft to-
We're still preparing that. I'll, I'll check with the finance administrator and see how quickly that we can actually get something, to get the whole picture, because if, if not, it'll be very confusing, so.
Okay. Next, I reviewed the materials regarding investments. Are you planning to provide a presentation that certain cash ledges that we have in the budget should be invested, or, or are we just gonna talk about investments? What, I'm not quite sure where the plan is on investments.
The plan was to bring the county in to look at how we handle where we put our funds on a regular basis. And the county was an additional vehicle or mechanism to invest our funds, whether it's water and sewer funds, general fund, whatever it may be. And we feel that we, we'd get a lot better interest or better return than we would just leaving money within a bank. So that meeting is scheduled right now for the end of April, and we plan on bringing representatives from the Oakland County Treasurer's office, and we also invited Andy Meisner, the county treasurer, to that meeting.
Because one of the things that came out also is that before you do the investment, you should really have an investment policy in place. And, and I get it. I understand why that policy should be there, so that's another policy that you may want to think about before we invest. Additionally, when I went back to the audit on restricted assets, they talk about the assets that were restricted with respect to the replacement fund, and this is over in the water, water department. And the auditors were recommending that the city reassess how it wants annual tap-in revenue to be utilized to fund the system in improvements. I just wanted to know, is that policy ready to go with the budget?
I don't believe it's ready to go with the budget, but we did have meetings with our finance administrator and our auditors regarding that. I'll check the, the minutes of that to see where we're going, or what direction, how we're moving forward.
Yeah, if we're gonna be talking about utilities, I would think that this policy should probably, since, probably needs to be updated. Next, I just wanted to know, do you know what our Act 51 funds are? I asked this before. I didn't know if you've had time to look into it.
We have not gotten the new totals yet. Finance administrator and I were just discussing that this week. I can give you what last year's fundings were, but I don't have this year's yet.
Okay, I'll try to get numbers to you tomorrow. And the other thing is on the SIP Plan, Capital Improvement Plan, I was just wondering if the city attorney and the city manager could take a look at MCL 125-3865. There was a lot of discussion about a capital improvement plan at the meeting, and the consensus in the room clearly was, is that it's mandatory for a city to have. And that clearly came out. So I just kinda wanted to know, 'cause if it is, then we've, we're not complying with the, with the statute. So we may be having a capital improvement plan sooner rather than later. So I can provide that this evening. Thank you. So that's all on the budget, but thank you very much.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Just to clarify, Councilmember Kurtswell's discussion regarding the acceptance of the checks that are being provided, she started that discussion referencing the Christmas party, and then finished it up referencing the retirement. So-
No.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, you did.
You did. So the question is, I believe it's in reference to the Christmas party, is what that is pertaining to, not Bob Donahue's retirement party, which was not covered by the city.
No, I think what I said was, and it'd be interesting, listen to the tape, is that a retirement party could not be paid for.
Right.
Just to be sure-
No, you cannot pay for-
-party, and not the retirement party, just for the sake of clarification.
Yeah, but his party wasn't paid for by city funds. It could not be. It would have been a, a disallowable expense of public funds.
Absolutely. And there's just a misunderstanding of that down here at this end of the table. It would sound, didn't carry quite that far, I guess. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
No, I was just gonna say, all I was gonna say was, it just, all we're saying is, I think it sounded like that's what you were saying, that when you said the retirement, it sounded like you said this retirement party. That was the only reason, that we were questioning that. That's all.
Councilmember Kibble?
I thought to Councilmember Kurtswell's comments, though, the idea of us approving donations, that had been a routine practice. So, and I, I think it's good both for the fact of transparency, and secondly, because it gives us another opportunity to give thanks for their, their helping us out with something like that, so.
Anyone else with anything for the budget tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the manager's report. Paul?
I've already updated you regarding the DDA Economic Development Director interviews that are taking place. I did advise you also, at our first meeting in April, we have representatives from Plant Miranda meeting to discuss our water and sewer rate analysis. Reminder, our budget workshop is scheduled for April 7th. I also want to remind everybody that March is reading month, and if you have the opportunity to read within the schools, please contact the schools to do that. I'm actually gonna be reading this Thursday at Sierra Elementary. I'm looking forward to meeting the kids. I'll be reading to one, three of the fourth grade classes that day. Planning Commission Agenda, on March 12th, the Polte Development will be going to Planning Commission. They're proposing to rezone the property from arm one to plan development, and approximately 50 lots for that particular location. And I want to update you a little bit. I, you know, Chief talked a little bit about the coronavirus several weeks ago. We had a meeting with our public safety staff to talk about this, and how we're gonna move forward, and addressing it to make sure that we're prepared in case the public does have any questions.
the public does have any questions. We had also meetings with staff, making sure everybody is acknowledging and has any questions about anything that we prepared for them. We've had contacts with our insurance companies regarding this, and how Blue Cross Blue Shield is preparing, and what they're potentially offering, coverage for people who are going to be tested potentially for it within the future, if that does necessarily take place. We have items that we are putting in all the buildings, all the vehicles, as the chief mentioned, but I just want you to know that staff is prepared for that, police, fire, other staff. We're trying to make it everything, do what we can. As the chief had mentioned, there's new information constantly coming out through the county. Our fire department's been having regular meetings with staff. We get new updated information, and we'll be providing that out to the public as well, and putting things in our website to try to help out with this particular process. And that's all I have.
Anyone have anything for Paul?
Yes, one thing.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Paul, could you throw some light on, in the manager's report, on page two here, at the very bottom, it says, Oakland County Health Department forwarded the Building Department a cease and desist order for the Corner Cafe. Could you throw a little light on that?
I believe there was some, an issue relating to their sink, or to some method of material going in our water, and I believe that's already, that's been resolved. We don't always get the full report, we just know that there is a cease and desist, and that report goes to the owners of the building, but I guess it was deemed nothing to be extremely serious, but it's a health department inspection that was done, and we believe everything was taken care of.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Paul. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Judy Keeling, 62180 Arlington Circle. Paul, I'd just like you to verify the March 12th meeting. Is it at seven o'clock, and is that about the lot behind Raleigh Court at Colonial Acres?
That's for the property right on 11 mile road, that's-
Right.
Yeah.
And it's at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Thursday night?
Yes.
Is that open to the public?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will close public comment for this evening, and we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Richards, why don't you get us started this evening?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a few short little items here. For those of us who appreciated the last historical program we had two weeks ago, we've got two more blockbuster programs coming up in the near future, one in April and one in June. I'm not briefed on exactly what the content will be, but I know they'll be good. Next item, tomorrow is the kickoff meeting for Depot Day, our first of organizational meetings for the Depot Day celebration at the Witches Historical Area. I can tell everybody out there, two of our main officers, very important officers, have resigned and moved and gone to Georgia. And another one of our very important officers is in the hospital for a couple of months, I guess, with a, had a stroke, and she's not in very good health. So in a nutshell, I'm just letting you know, we haven't got an abundance of people. We need some new people, okay, to help put our Depot Day together, if we want to make it as big as it was this past year, and hopefully improve it, and get it a little bigger. Thank you very much on that one. I just want to move on to number three here. For those of you that don't know what's going on, and I'm one of them, okay? The Plymouth Physical Therapy Building is closing up, and it's for sale. A prospectus was given to me by Carol Brandon here at City Hall, and the people in the DDA, they weren't aware of it either. But whatever, that's a very large piece of property, and that could be a restaurant or something major in this town, okay? Where the Plymouth Physical Therapy is going, I don't know, but they're asking a million and a half dollars for it, so I don't think nothing will happen in the very near future with that property. It's too bad, because it's a big hole on our main drag, and Mo's garage, of course, is vacant, and it's got some violations, but I don't know what's going to happen with that. Okay, on previously discussed items three and four on tonight's agenda, a little sheet was provided for us to review, us on council here, and this is, if you can't see this very well, but this is the enlarged, Carol Brandon enlarged this for me, and I couldn't see it, I couldn't read it. And I would hope we could have things enlarged enough so that the numbers, you can read the numbers for quotations and bids. I've got to watch that. Okay, the next item and last item, is I just want to mention a few words on going up for the cable viewers. The concept of activism is very important in our community. We have people who are activists, and we need more. I was an activist for seven years before I finally got elected to a council position, and a lot of the things I did and got away with as an activist, I can't do on council, okay? I've got to play it straight, and submit paperwork, and play the game differently. Anyway, areas that this city needs help at, I'll just list a few of them. But whatever they are, if someone comes to that podium right there and tells us the facts, that they've researched about certain topics, facts that we don't have, it can help the administration make a decision, and come to a conclusion with something, okay, to present to council. Areas of concern, just to mention a few, water and sewer rates, that's something for the mathematically inclined to study and review. Our local street repairs, that's something that needs attention by outside activists to review things, and see where the truth is. The cemetery, policies and future growth articles. Zoning ordinances to be presented to the Planning Commission, that's something that an activist can do. I've presented ordinances from other communities, from time to time, to the Planning Commission, which I researched different topics, and they needed a new one, you know? You guys, anybody out there can do that. And, and the last would be our historical group. Oh, no, historically, I already spoke about that the last time. And Parks and Recs needs helpful ideas for future growth in our 13 park properties around the city. And, yeah, we need help. Thank you very much, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to keep my comments short tonight, between the full moon and Friday the 13th this week and coronavirus, I'm just exhausted, so I think everybody else is maybe feeling the same way. So have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kurtschwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'll make up for it. Anyway, this past weekend, myself, Rose, and Lisa attended Michigan Municipal League Conferences. The conference that Rose and I were in dealt with municipal budgeting. And during the breaks, and lunch, and dinner, and socializing with the elected officials throughout the state, plus city managers and economic development directors, Rose and I had a great opportunity to network with individuals. And I can tell you that the people who came up to me, and I know they came up to Rose during these social and free times, is that all people we're talking about was our downtown. So I have a feeling that Bob did a great job in publicizing through his network what was going on in South Lyon. Fabulous, fabulous comments that I received. People seemed to be impressed by two events that they knew that we had. The Fall Festival, which I told them it's called Pumpkin Fest, but they saw it as a fall festival. The other one was, I saw a picture of our large Christmas tree over at Heinemann Engineering. Apparently, a gentleman has family, he's on the west side of the state, has family in Lyon Township, and the family in Lyon Township came to the lighting of that Christmas tree, took a picture of it, and emailed it to him, and said, "Does your city have this?" So it was just a really, really great weekend, and I can tell you that, I'm sure, Lisa too, that all of us were just great, great ambassadors for the city of South Lyon. It was just a great, just a great weekend, and just a great response with respect to the city. Next, I'd like to thank the past couple months, a lot of people knew that I was involved in this. I've been working with a lot of mayors throughout Oakland County, through township supervisor, supervisors, my friends on the other side of the aisle, union members who were involved in education and manufacturing, and we came from all different political backgrounds, and we worked for a common cause in Oakland County. And that was to oppose the RTA transfer tax bill in Lansing. We made our phone calls, we worked really hard. So I want to thank everybody that did their part, did their share, because the real winner on this is, is the taxpayers, and the real, real big winner are the taxpayers in South Lyon, because we never would have seen a dime of any of that money. So I want to just make sure I thank everybody that I worked with, just an incredible group of individuals. Next, this is Women's History Month, and I'm sure, as this comes to no surprise to anyone, that my grandmother and my mother were politically active, and they cherish their right to vote in every single election. Tonight, I would like to thank Rose Walton and Lisa Dilge for being part of women's history in South Lyon. I'm honored to serve with them as dedicated public servants, first, and secondly, as women on this journey, as difficult as it sometimes is, to ensure that we have good representation in the public arena by all our demographics. So thank you, Lisa Dilge, and thank you, Rose, for doing your part. And last, I think what makes this just a great city to live in, I have to thank our mayor, is going to be marrying somebody in that is associated in the fire department. You don't get any more, I don't know, down home, what a great community, when your mayor can marry somebody in your city. So Dan, you know, thank you, what a great job. I mean, just, just super, so, thank you, sir, thank you.
I'm very excited about it, so thank you, Councilmember Kurtschwell. Councilmember Kivell?
Short and sweet, get out and vote tomorrow. Please, get out and vote, and please step up to the plate, come to City Hall, sign up to get on a commission, or a board, or be a volunteer of some sort. Everybody can pitch in, and I guarantee you, the reward will be worth every bit of effort that you put into it. That's all I've got, thank you.
Councilmember Dilge?
Thank you. Just to tag on to the voting issue, I do want to thank our clerk and the office staff for how much work they've already put in, and how much the work they're going to put in tomorrow. I've talked to several people who came in over the weekend, and everybody said that it was very pleasant to deal with, and they were, they were afraid that there were going to be lines, and it was going to take a lot, and they just said that our staff was wonderful. So I think that was really great. And preemptively, thank the poll workers, they're going to be there, and the, and the police and fire who are going to help make sure the operations are smooth. Just want to remind everybody that not only, if you're not interested in the presidential part of the ballot, that the DIA is also on there. I won't offer my opinion on that, but it's there. The other thing I wanted to say is congratulations to the witch's hat. I got to have a little tour of the kitchen in the back end, and to see all the, the new expanded eating areas. I've seen, I've heard nothing but rave reviews. They have some amazing food, they have a vegan menu, the whole operation is great, and it's really, I think we're very fortunate to have that business in our city. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilge. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I just want to provide a couple of updates this evening. First, the Huron River Watershed Council, in conjunction with South Lyon's Wellhead Protection Committee, will be hosting a presentation entitled Land and Water Connection, Keeping the Huron Healthy. It's going to be held here at City Hall on Monday, March 23rd, from one o'clock to two o'clock, and I believe it's going to be recorded, and will hopefully be aired on channel 19 or 20, depending on who your cable provider is. So if you can't make it in person, plan to check it out online if you can. On another note, at a city council meeting in August last year, I talked about the theft of flowers from the gardens at the Salem South Lyon District Library. At the time, they had a video of a man and a woman going from garden to garden, digging up and taking a number of plants. Well, tonight, I'm happy to announce those individuals have been identified, and the Wasnaug County Prosecutor's Office is pressing charges against that man and woman for those thefts. Members of the Salem South Lyon District Library have echoed the, the response, and they're hoping they'll throw the book at them. You picked up on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. I don't have a lot, I just want to echo our volunteers and our staff across the board tomorrow, and for a big day, so thank you to all of you, and I encourage everyone to get out and vote. So it'll be a busy day here in the city tomorrow. I do want to mention one thing, Friday, when I got off of work and got home, I did spot a full-size coyote in the neighborhood. And our neighborhood's kind of fenced in, so you think that your pet may be safe out there. They, I was informed by our officers that came, that the coyotes are in mating season, and they will get a little aggressive if you have a dog that may be back there, so just be paying attention, you don't want, we don't want anything bad happening to our pets that we let out in the backyard, and it's not just our friends that don't have fences. If you have a fence, they can get over it. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, all.